Board of Supervisors, February 22.
All right, welcome everybody this morning. We'll call this regular meeting of Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, Mr. Grandia.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Stephen Combs.
Here.
Very good. On item number two, we need to amend the agenda to include Resolution 2022-27. It's actually, it's the healthcare program resolution, which we will be talking about on items one and item thirteen when we talk about the budget. This is just a resolution formalizing that discussion if the board so decides today. So we need to add this. I'd like to put this as item fourteen on the agenda. That way we don't have to reorder our numbers, just one number.
I'll make the motion to amend the agenda today. I'm gonna add Resolution 2022-27 as number, item number fourteen.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Very good, thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve this morning's agenda as amended.
Make motion to approve today's agenda as amended.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Very good, thank you. Jake, any communications?
No, sir.
All right, Board, any communications?
Uh, yeah, I've had several communications on our health renewal plan, so obviously we left it over pretty hard individually, anyway, and tried to come to some conclusions that what we thought would be best for the employees, and we'll get into that later in a later discussion. I also had, was contacted by Alan Archibald of the Juvenile Court Services Supervisor about the promote, proposed move of Juvenile Court Services. That has not all been, you know, we haven't, we haven't really come to a complete conclusion on that yet, but I tried contacting him yesterday, but I could not get ahold of him.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Keisha?
Oh, had compliments, emails regarding the premium pay from the ARPA funds, but other than that, no other communication.
And same for me as well, so appreciate those, those emails. All right, we'll move on. Public comments, this is the portion of our agenda the public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. The Board cannot act on those items. They could be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir, can you identify yourself and then come over the mics?
Sure. My name is Zachary Craftery.
Welcome this morning.
Thank you. In January, there, there was a petition eight six six seven seven for rezoning request from CJ Auto Salvage. Do, do some mailing errors. We were, we were never notified of this request and missed the public portion of this hearing. Um, at this time, I'd just like to bring up our concerns we have. We have the adjacent property to the south. Um, I believe that Missy Boffenberger has submitted some pictures to you guys regarding the, the, the location of some salvage cars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's, that's exactly what we're trying to prevent here. As you can see from those pictures, they're, they're lined against the fence row and devalued property
and have, we have livestock and wildlife concerns with those cars, the location of those cars. Um, our request is to have a two hundred and fifty foot buffer with planet screening on the south end um, due to preserve land value and aesthetics. I guess, do you have any questions for me, Board?
No, we'll have that as an item, I believe it is.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, our second reading today is item number three.
Okay.
So just so you understand the process, we did the first reading and the last meeting. Today's reading is just really an approval of that reading, and then the third and final is where we get into the, do we do this or not?
Okay.
So, so I appreciate those comments.
Just due to the mail, mail here, we, we never did receive those.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate your concerns. Thank you, thank you. Very good, thank you for that. Are there any other public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Anything online? Nothing online? Nothing else in house? We'll move on. I would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Make motion we approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Hi.
Combs.
Hi. Move, move ahead, Donner.
That was almost a reverb. Did I say anything?
I, I think you did.
No, I didn't.
But you were.
Steve eyed for me.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Very good, thank you.
Steve wants to get two in for every one. All right. Onto business, first item. Uh, we welcome Sarah Bradshaw from Holmes Murphy coming down in this weather from Des Moines to talk about our employee benefits, continue that discussion. Uh, she has in your packet, Board, I, I don't know if we have it online, but I know you have it here with the Board. Do you have it online too?
Yes.
Okay, great. But Sarah wanted to walk us through where we're at with our health insurance plan design, also to talk about some, uh, changes. So I asked Sarah and Lisa to go through an analysis of this to try to limit the impact of health insurance increases to our employees. Uh, we have dollars sitting in a dental fund account. Our dental plan is self-funded. Well, those dollars just have continued to accumulate over the years. I'm gonna try not to steal too much of Sarah's thunder here. Um, and we need to figure out a way to use those dollars because they just keep accumulating because the plan is overfunded. And one way to do that would be to shift that to the health insurance program, mitigate some of that increase, both to the employee and to the county, uh, and keep the plan the same for one more year. So Sarah, with that, thanks for coming down.
Yes, thank you, Mark and Board for having me here. For those of you that don't know me, I am Sarah Bradshaw. We are the benefits consulting partner to Marion County. And as Mark alluded to, we did make some adjustments in funding in order to keep the plan as stable as possible and provide the least amount of disruption to the employees for both the health insurance and the other benefits that are part of the package. So with that, we'll get started. We'll start with the overall recommendation, and then we'll break that down between the health and the dental plan. So first, our recommendation is to renew all current carriers, insurance carriers and benefits with no changes to any of the plan assignments. And this is really important because we're trying to keep those deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums on the health insurance in particular manageable and keep those competitive as well. With that, then we are accepting the full renewal increase from Wellmark, and that, if you were here last meeting, is about two hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase. Marion County is going to absorb just over a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars of that health insurance increase on behalf of the employees. Uh, with that, it leaves the employees with a very minimal increase of five percent, and that comes out to around an additional twenty thousand five hundred annually in total. We are gonna break that down in just a couple of slides, so you can see the monthly impact to the employees. In order for the county to absorb that much of the increase, a few different adjustments will need to happen, and that is on bullet point number four. As, um, Mark mentioned, there is some additional funds in the dental plan, so that second bullet point under, uh, fourth one there, we will be utilizing about eighty-eight thousand dollars in excess dental reserve funds to help cover that health insurance increase. Um, additionally, right above that, in order for the county to absorb that much, we are going to make a recommendation to reduce Marion County's dental contributions by fifty percent. So in turn, that does shift around twenty-seven thousand dollars to the employees in premiums, and we will show that monthly impact as well. Uh, third bullet point under that one is we will be utilizing thirty thousand dollars in reserve funds that have been set aside for the Affordable Care Act. Uh, there were some changes to those fees made by Wellmark a few years back, and so some funds were set aside in order to be prepared to pay those fees. And, um, we now realize that those fees are not going to be owed, and so that's a great opportunity to use those excess funds towards mitigating the health insurance increase. So all of those levers and all of those funds provide a total of around a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that Marion County can use towards that hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar increase. Additionally, uh, we wanted to mention at the bottom, Marion County does continue to pay about forty-eight percent of the vision premiums. So for those who do that enroll in the vision plan, um, that comes out to around ninety-five hundred dollars a year that the county pays. Also, basic life and accidental death and dismemberment premiums are paid for on behalf of the employees, and that totals around thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Lastly, there are some flexible spending account admin fees. Those are not changing for the upcoming year, but those total around thirty-five hundred dollars a year.
Let's, let's stop there for a minute, Sarah. Board, do you have any, any questions on that page? There's a lot of information, so I don't wanna miss anything.
Hey, Sarah, can you go over, so the Affordable Care Act and regarding that, those fundings, I guess I'm not familiar with that. So there was a, a dollar amount that we had to have set aside, is, is, can you help me explain that to me?
Yes, so there were set fees that were baked into your Wellmark premiums to cover the ACA or Affordable Care Act taxes. And, uh, there was a period of time where Wellmark changed their stance on whether they were going to be including those in the premiums or whether those were required or not, and so when the ACA pulled back on some of those fees, they had already been accounted for in the funding, and so that additional money is just built up or accrued over that time period, and so that it wasn't, it wasn't in the end needed to use for the ACA as it was intended.
Okay.
What's the monthly increase if we reduce Marion County's demo contributions? What, what's, what's that change from, from what they pay now to what they'd be paying monthly?
Great, great question. So, uh, we could go ahead if you want to, to page seven, and we can address that question right now, and then we'll, we'll flip back. So it is gonna be a little bit hard to see for, for those of you sitting in the room. Uh, one more slide, Lisa.
One more?
Thank you. Great. So in purple at the bottom there, you'll see the monthly increase to the employees. Uh, for single coverage, that premium will go up to, um, an additional fifteen dollars and seventy cents. And for family, it would go up an additional sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents a month. Questions? Does that answer your question?
That's the additional cost.
That's additional. So in the middle there, in the bluish, uh, green color, that would be the total monthly cost for the employees. So for single coverage, the employee would pay seventeen dollars and thirty-five cents a month. For a family, they would pay eighty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents a month.
Compared to current, which is a dollar sixty-five and seventy-three oh four?
That's correct.
So currently, just looking at this, you know, high, you know, high level, current level, we're about fifty-fifty. It would be shifting that more to employee versus the employer, so seventy-six, yeah, yeah.
That's correct.
Because at the same time, we're, at the same time you're doing the increase, what the increase is, is shifting that burden.
Okay.
Lisa, you can go back then to the Board. Yes, Sarah, thank you.
And let me, can I comment on that for a minute, Sarah? So I wanna make sure everybody understands, A, for the dollars that we're going to save on the health insurance side, it, it far outweighs this when you think about the employees and what they pay, and the ten percent, remember it was a ten point four two percent increase on the health insurance plan, that we're knocking down to a five. So that's a considerable change when you look at the dollars on the health insurance side. Second piece is this, the dental plan, everybody's got their own view of insurance. We have a lot of participation, but it's an overfunded plan. So in the future, as this account builds up money again, because it will, our average claim costs run about six thousand six hundred, um, I guess, what's it, is that monthly, Lisa? About monthly?
Monthly.
But we collect more in premium than that. Um, so we build up an account over a period of years. Well, if we wanna put that back toward helping the employees out, then that should be more of an employee contribution than a county contribution. And, uh, dental insurance tends to work that way. It's just an underutilized form of insurance that has very, or lower loss ratios than health insurance. So that's the structural change, but it's really to keep the health plan consistent for one more year. As you know, that ten percent increase, we were thinking about making some other changes to the plan. This way, it gives us another year under the current structure, absorbing a lot of that rate increase. November of next year, though, we probably start looking at changing, depending on what our claims history is. So it gives us a year to think about what we're going to try to do to address healthcare costs, because they're only going up. So, anyway, Sarah, sorry.
No, that was, that was great, Mark, thank you. Uh, and just to further break down the health plan, we did cover this already, but as Mark said, it was a ten point four two percent increase that we were faced with, and, and we did a lot of modeling around shifting contributions and perhaps increasing contributions for the richest plan for the employees. And, um, in an effort to not have to go to that extreme, uh, I think we've arrived at a little bit of compromise here. Um, and so Marion County will absorb that large part of that increase with the employee contributions, again, only increasing five percent. Um, the HSA contribution that Marion County makes will remain at the fifteen hundred dollars for both, uh, single individuals and family for the upcoming year. This is the recommended contribution strategy for the medical plan. Uh, there in the top in blue, it would be that second column that you wanna look at. That will be the monthly cost, uh, effective July first, uh, for the employees on the HMO plan. That will be, uh, for single, it would be thirty-one dollars and forty-one cents. For family, it would be the three fifty-five, fifty-eight, and then so on as you go down that list. In bottom, in purple, that reflects the additional amount that the employee will be paying on a monthly basis out of their paycheck. So for the HMO single, that would be a dollar fifty. Family would be sixteen dollars and ninety-three cents additional, and then so forth. All of these projections that you see here do assume, uh, current enrollment amounts, and we do know that during open enrollment, people can decide to make different plan choices, so those numbers could shift. Lot of numbers on this page. Are there any questions?
Steve, Keisha, just, yeah, take your time, and if you have questions, this is the time to ask, so. And, and we can also talk on item fourteen too, about it as well.
Okay.
We'll have, we'll have both opportunities, but Sarah's here now with the pressure on our minds, so.
Well, I certainly want to, uh, keep overall costs down for the employee, and it's a struggle on how to get there, a, a real struggle. And I, and I know some other, some of the other organizations I'm involved with, uh, some of their healthcare costs have went up way more than this, you know, like twenty-six percent. So if we can get the employees' cost down to five percent, I'm, I, I guess I, I don't know how else to get there. But, you know, in the current, in the current international situation that I think we're involved in now, if everybody's, unless everybody's living in a hole, they understand what's going on, uh, I just don't see how, how the cost, we can control costs, you know. It would, sometime, at some point in time, it looks to me as, it's gonna be unsustainable if, if the current, in the current atmosphere. And, and I know, I'm just gonna throw this out there, everybody knows what's going on internationally. That's going to affect us at the local level. I don't care what anybody says, it's gonna, it's gonna affect us, everybody. And I know there's some, there's some thought going around at the federal level right now about suspending the, uh, fuel tax, the federal fuel tax. And I know Tyler could speak to this better than I can on how, how that will probably affect us at the local level. I suspect it's not going to be very good. I know, I know it's just talk right now, but that was, that was the federal, the federal way of relieving some pain on what's about to happen sanction wise. I'm just throwing that out there so everybody knows what everybody's struggling with here.
No, that's a great comment, Steve. I mean, one of the biggest ways it's gonna impact us, I don't know if you all know this or not, but we've been importing about two hundred million barrels of oil from Russia. So I imagine that's gonna play into all this if things get really bad. So if you like your gas prices what they are now, they could go higher. So there you go.
Which, which goes to your point, Mark, that I guess, I guess I'm the opinion that we need to help the employees best we can within our, within our means, and see what next year brings, because next year may be a whole different scenario on funding levels.
Yeah, this gives us, it gives us time to look at where our claims are going, are going to develop. And it allows us to maintain what I believe is a very competitive benefit plan, when we've looked at other plans throughout the county. And it does, I think, maximize both raises and the, um, the bonuses that employees receive where they're not spending at all on a health insurance increase. So it's trying to balance all those interests to the best we can while maintaining a good plan. That's everybody seems to like with a company that we've had a consistent performance with, uh, over the years and not making a material change at this time. It also doesn't increase really the county cost, because we're leveraging dollars that were sitting there doing nothing. And where there are limited use dollars, like so many things in county government, they just sit there, they don't draw interest, we can't invest them, we can't do anything with them. They just sit in an account and just continue to accumulate. No reason to do that. Use those dollars to offset some of these increases now, that account will, again, it's got plenty of reserves. Lisa and I did all the math, Sarah's done all the math. We'll have plenty of reserves in it. It will continue to build up again over the years. And then maybe you can do something with it on health insurance five years from now.
So I have a couple of questions. So in regarding, you know, shifting the dollars, yeah, that makes sense to me. Wanting to know, um, since Fund Two is, I mean, that's where this, where we pay our benefits out of is Fund Two, and Fund Two is doing well. Um, is there any way that, you know, shifting those dollars not so high? I mean, I get it. I think that a dollar sixty-five is very reasonable, but maybe one-third versus, um, you know, employee pays one-third versus, and then the county pays two-thirds. Just a thought, um, that's been toiling in my mind and seeing how that does. I guess if we were to, you know, shift those dollars and then change things a little bit, is that still going to make this account, um, be okay?
So walk me through what you think, Keisha.
So.
What are you, what are you changing in terms of the?
The single, so if you were to look at the single, sorry, I wanna be able to speak in the mic so those that can hear me on the mic.
We talked dental.
Yes, for the dental, when you're looking at the single rate, at a dollar sixty-five is currently. We would be changing the single rate if we went with this proposed to seventeen dollars and thirty-five cents. Maybe not going quite as, as, as high. I, I do think a dollar sixty-five is very reasonable. Um, maybe shifting that to, uh, a third, so maybe eleven dollars, you know, versus seventeen, because our fund balance is doing well, but also being responsible to the taxpayer and, and looking at that. That's kinda how I was, um, I was looking at it, just on the single.
So where, so you would take that six dollars, 'cause I'm just gonna round it up here and say you wanna go to eleven dollars and thirty-five cents on the single, am I, is that accurate?
Roughly, yeah, yeah, one-third, yeah.
Just to be, just to make it.
Yep, yep.
Easier. Where do you wanna put those dollars? You wanna shift that over to the employer? Where we add that to the fifteen sixty-nine?
So we would pay the difference. So I, I haven't figured those numbers, so, you know.
Give me a second.
Yeah, we can run that math for you. Lisa, you got that?
Yep.
Okay.
While Lisa is doing that calculation, the one thing that we wanna be mindful of is making sure that those dollars do get contributed from the employer so that the fund doesn't go too low, and so we wanna make sure we maintain some level of reserves if we do have a higher claims month reduction as well.
I do think having a dental package is important. Um, when you're trying to recruit, if you can say that you have a dental package, um, you know.
Lisa, just take eighty-eight times six and add it to our total. I don't have my calculator in front of me.
Yeah, I could've, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just forward that idea.
You're only talking five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not gonna, that's not gonna materially change the math as far as the fund goes, Keisha. So that's, we can do that if that's something you'd like to do.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, you know, I think that's, to me, is, that's how I was feeling. I mean, I don't know what you guys feel like, but yeah.
No, I, I would be supportive of that.
I wouldn't buy dental insurance. That'd be my feeling, but that's.
Yeah, no, right, and I get that, and there's some people that, yeah.
I, I, I mean, one thing to think about from a benefit standpoint, and we've talked about this in the renewals, I know, uh, Lisa and Sarah are working on this for employees. But if you don't have an HSA, you, if you're younger, you gotta think about that, because you can pay your dental on a pre-tax dollars. That's the way I would go. But people like the dental program, so they, but they pay for it. But as I'm telling you right now, it's overfunded, which means it's underutilized. So you pay for something you're not using. So just remember, just keep that in mind. But Keisha, I have no problem if you wanna shift that, because that's not gonna materially change the math. Here.
So, so just so I understand, so you're looking at, um, just the singles, the, the employee would pay eleven thirty-five a month. The county would contribute twenty-one sixty-nine, and the family would stay the same that's presented in this slide.
Correct.
Correct, that's correct. And when we get to this resolution, Keisha, remember that, so we can make that amendment.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's, Steve?
No, I'm good with that.
Issues with that?
I'm supportive of that.
Okay, good, good comment. Any, anything else right now while we've got Sarah?
No, I.
Tyler? Ty, no. No? Oh, gave you the mic, okay.
Last time Sarah was here, there was a option for increasing the HSA contribution. I guess what was the determining factor there is not increase.
'Cause I don't wanna change it this year.
Family.
We're just gonna keep our costs as, as constant as we can, using these additional dollars to offset them, basically to lower the, the real dollar impact. We've already got these dollars sitting in this account. We can't use it for anything else. So let's give both the employee and the taxpayers an opportunity to reduce those costs. As Keisha alluded to, Fund Two is doing fine. This gives us a little extra boost in Fund Two. And then next year, we can see where we're sitting. We're actually reducing that levy rate by twenty cents. This year, we may have some options next year to do further tax reduction. So that's why no change to that this year. Keeps the plan the same, which I, I still think is a good plan.
I think we offer a very competitive plan.
Yeah, because next year may look a whole lot different.
But good question, Tyler. Any other, any other, Steve, Keisha, any other questions for Sarah?
No, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you for explaining that.
Sarah, I'll let you wrap up. You got anything else you wanna add?
I don't believe I have anything else, but, um, just wanna wrap it up by saying every time we approach a renewal.
I don't understand. Hey, Siri, I'll let you wrap up, you got anything else to say?
Siri, Sarah.
They are listening to us. That's even when it's off.
That's what happens when you get one of those new fancy phones, right?
It was just very clear to me that, uh, your Board cares a whole lot about the employees and, and keeping that disruption as minimal as possible. It was just very clear to me that uh, your board uh, cares a whole lot about the employees and, and keeping that disruption as minimal as possible. And so every time we approach that in partnership with them, um, we're looking for the most sustainable plan, the most stable plan. Um, and also a plan that you, the employees can afford, and so we're balancing that with the budget limitations that we're faced with um, from year to year. So appreciate your time today and um, have a great day.
Sarah, thank you for all your work, thank you very much.
Thank you Sarah.
And we will be talking more about this later on in the agenda, but for now. Is there a motion to close discussion on this item?
I'm gonna close, close discussion on this item?
A second.
John?
I.
McCollum?
Hi.
Brady?
Hi, very good, thank you. Okay. Gonna run out of places to put paper here.
I know.
All right. Item number two, uh, FY twenty-three library funding. Now, we did this during our budget process, uh, where traditionally Jake, or last year, we, we gave about ninety-five thousand to the libraries.
Yeah, there's the historical.
Oh, right up there on the board? Very good. So uh, we've been having some discussions as a board on how we want to approach that. This year, a couple of the things that have been brought up is maybe reducing that amount to what the actual levy rate is. Because that is over, the statutory levy rate, the county is like six cents. Uh, that amount is over, that ninety-five thousand is over that levy amount, so maybe reducing that. Uh, in conjunction with that or separate from that could be redistributing some of those dollars if possible to some of the smaller libraries. So giving your Pella and Knoxville libraries maybe some funding, but less of it. And redistributing those dollars to the Melcher, Pleasantville and Bussie libraries. So those have been some of the discussions that we've been having as a board, uh, which leads us to this item. So Steve, Kisha, I don't know if you've had any more thoughts or anything else you'd like to bring up in this matter.
No, I think that, that was pretty well said, I guess it was, you know, kinda my idea, cause uh. I, my point to the library board was if they were open to, and it wasn't. I did not say that I wanted you to restructure, I said if you were open to restructuring it so that the smaller libraries could get a bigger piece of the pie. And just like Mark said, statutorily, we're way above. What we were obligated to give, so. And again, like I said, next year may look a whole different ballgame as far as uh. Funding to some of the peripheral organizations that we do give funds to, so. I have to be, I, I think I would be doing a disservice to the taxpayers if I didn't, if I didn't keep that in the back of my head on. What I, what I anticipate is going to be happening in the future here, in the near future.
Um, yeah, when looking at it and, and I went through the figures from looking at current year. You know, Pella, out of this money of the ninety-five thousand, Pella gets fifty-one thousand, two fifty, Knoxville gets twenty-five thousand. Pleasantville, the web, um, shade, is it web shade, shadow? Yeah, Web Shade will get seventy-seven fifty. Um, and the city just took them over, I do know that, Melcher Dallas gets sixty-two fifty and Bussie gets forty-seven fifty. I, I'm thinking, and when, when we had spoke about, you know, how we've helped Pella and Knoxville. And, well, I also think of the lost funds that we give, you know, Pella and Knoxville there too. I, it's just a huge difference, so I did also send an email and asked if there was any way that we could take that pie and redistribute. And uh. I'm assuming what we got back, it doesn't look like it was redistributed at all, I'm not quite for sure, um. Well, you know, why we can't, it's statutory, it looks like to me when we did the research, um, and I had, had legal counsel look at the research. It's really, when, when reading it, I mean, we have to give uh. The, the levy amount, the ma- you know, the minimum levy amount, which is six cents, and then, you know, there's the difference. Um, but it looks like that's open to us and how we distribute that.
Does the six cents come out to a hundred dollars?
It's fifty-nine thousand, seven sixty-two.
Okay. So that's the difference, we, we are, we are required to do that fifty-nine thousand, we've been, last year we did ninety-five. So.
It's, it's not a hu- huge amount of money, but I also see how much difference, so. I'm just gonna use Pleasantville, so Pleasantville brought, you know, took on their library, I know that the seventy-seven fifty is imperative for their budget, I get that. I'm sure it is for Melcher Dallas and I'm sure it is for Bussie too, um, that they need that to be able to, to um, have a library. Um, I am a supporter of the big libraries too, um, but I'm trying to look at how can we. We have been able to help Knoxville and Pella. And this is an opportunity for us to help these smaller towns too, I was like, you know, it might be an avenue, so. Um, in which we could help them and uh, I do think that libraries, um. When you're trying to grow a city. That's, and uh, it's important, people want to know that you have those amenities and um, and those resources.
Yeah, those are, I mean. All good points, uh, my view is I tend to look at. The relationship between our cities and the county in totality. So. You try to look and see where we as a board, we've been very engaged uh, with some significant projects in Pella and Knoxville. Uh, we've asked our entire county to support the Prairie Ridge development. Which totals al- almost five million dollars uh, in assistance on infrastructure to get that project going. Knoxville, it's eleven million, you know, for the VA project. So we've done some significant partnerships with those two municipalities, there'll probably be more to come. So it's an opportunity for us to rethink the total relationship. And say for our smaller towns, is there a way to help them? With what we know are budget constraints. Well, it doesn't matter whether you're in Pleasantville, Bussie or Melcher, we know there are budget constraints. Um, in those areas, uh, so for the libraries, is that a way to redistribute that considering the assistance that's already been given? Uh, given with the interest costs and everything else that, that we're asking all of our residents to incur, uh, to support those housing problems. So do uh, you folks have a, a motion or a recommendation you'd like to discuss? Last year we were at ninety-five, statutory is six cents, which is fifty-nine.
So that's six, sorry, and Russell Thompson at Knoxville. Um, so that's six cents per thousand dollar valuation that was set in the nineteen seventies. Actually what we, so you see what we get is about eleven cents. Um, the average, our library gets fifteen cents. And so the five thousand dollars that we're requesting would actually bring us up to just twelve cents, which is below the average.
No, I appreciate that.
And I'll, and I'll let them speak.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and that's fine, is there anybody else from the libraries that would like to present?
Sure.
You don't have to.
No, that's okay, um, that's what I'm here for. So in July.
Could you identify yourself ma'am?
My name is Jolene Gleck, I'm with the Web Shade Public Library.
Welcome.
Um, we are grateful that our doors are now um, open. Because um, the city, July first officially took us over financially. Um, we had been previously um, financed through a trust. The, which is great news that they took us over, but financially, it literally, they've just given us enough funds just to have the doors open. To pay for the heat, for um, wages and just everyday um, operation costs. We don't have no funding for programs, we don't have no funding for books, we don't have no funding if the heat. The heater goes out, which is one of our, what we're working on to writing grants right now is to replace the heat, the furnace and the air conditioning unit. Which has broken down twice in the last two months. If, we wanna become an official public library, we have to reach certain tiers. Um, in those tiers, one of the things is that we have to have three percent new books. Um, added into the library and three percent needed. The only way that we're receiving new books right now is because we have a fabulous friends group that writes grants. And that's what we rely on, um, we had a city, a meeting yesterday on the budget. And it's literally the same budget that we received um, last year, um, because they're pensioned, they're having to um, take funds from other. Places in the city, and that's the only reason why um, we remain open at the moment. And they had talks of um. Other negative things that might happen to the library because the funds aren't there. Um, my main thing is we. When I started there in twenty sixteen, we didn't even have the five oh three one C number. And the city at that time didn't even want to take us on because they had so much negative things about. The roof was leaking, the, the east room, um, water was coming in, a huge list. So at that time, um. The friends group went, got the five oh three one C number, went sort of writing grants, we literally took that list. That the assessor had um, given us and went off every little thing that was wrong with our building. So that at the time when the trust money ran out, that we could take it back to the city and say, look, I'm like. We've done this and this and this, why, why didn't you wanna take us over? So right now, what I'm worried about is, um, yes, our doors are open, but for us to provide services, just. Regular services like story time, a summer reading program, new books in and out, um. It's, we are struggling and I know the seven thousand, seven hundred that you gave us last year, they're already in our budget, they're already. Putting that in as us receiving that, so if we don't at least receive that, um. They're gonna pull it from other things and that's. And they're already looking negative on us, and the scary thing is, is I love our friends group and they keep writing grants. But they're not always gonna be there because it'll be some type of rotating, you know, we can't always rely on, um. God bless them, because I love them and that's the reason why we're still here is because you're such a group, but um. We struggle, financially we struggle, but in another way, I'm kind of proud of what we've done on our finances because. The, our community has supported us and they still want us there. And so, um, we might be a small library, but um, we have the small town feel. I'm like, we might not be able to give everything to everybody, but we give them a safe place to go. We give them someplace where they can come and we'll try to give them information to where they can go for that, and for, for um, healthcare, for. Many different services, um. I'm blessed that we're still open, but um, it's kinda be really hard if we get, um. If you decrease that budget that, um. So thank you so much, thanks for listening to me, and I could go on hours and hours about the library, because I'm.
We, we can tell you very passionately.
Appreciate your passion about that, absolutely, thank you, thank you very much for your comments.
Good morning, I'm Susan Bacon and I'm from Bussie.
Welcome.
Which is your very smallest library with the smallest community. The, if you've ever been to Bussie and visited our library, it's a wonder what a small community can do. Because the funds were all donated to build the building in twenty, in two thousand. Okay, we are like Pleasantville, we do not have in our budget money for books or programs. The, the budget is basically to keep the doors open, keep the computers running. Keep someone there, the library director works fourteen hours a week. And the director has to do the same, not maybe as big a, uh, you know, as big a chore as the larger libraries. But the library director fills all the, the. The youth, the adult and planning the program, working on budgets, getting ready for board meetings and such. So if our bu- if you cut our budget. It's gonna make a big difference, but if you could see your way through to improving it, even if it was just a thousand dollars, that thousand dollars. For Bussie is gonna do way more for Bussie than it will your larger libraries. We also do not have any large businesses to connect to, to the, to give us money. We have donations. Our books are bought through donation money. Our programs are bought, are provided by uh, fundraising. So that we can have a summer reading program, which we do every summer. And we have like an attendance of uh. Twenty-five to thirty kids usually. Um, we did, before COVID came, we used, we had a, an adult program. From April to October where once a month we would have a program, a coffee time, sometimes we would have a presenter. And sometimes someone in the community would free, you know, prevent a program freely. So um. I guess what I'm saying is, we need, we need the money, so, and also the thing about it is. A lot of our use in our library is personal use, coming into the library, using the books. We, we don't have as much, uh, we have online computers that people use and stuff, but we don't. Have as much online reading, you know, through the um, levy and bridges as the other libraries. So it is very important for us to keep our doors open.
Very good.
Thank you Susan, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Just to round things out, my name is Marissa Clark, I'm the director of the Pella Public Library. And I should also mention, we have Lori from um, Melcher Dallas online, um, I don't know if she'll wanna be able to make some comments as well. But just a few points to um, to touch on or to reiterate for my colleagues. Is that the funding model that was presented and requested um, was decided upon um, as a consensus between um, the library directors. In collaboration with our library boards and our um, city administrators or mayors. Because the directors felt that was a reasonably modest increase to um, um, the county's funding of the libraries. That would make a really meaningful impact to the budgets of the county's smallest libraries. As was already mentioned, um, we as libraries are in the process of budget planning with our cities as well, and so. The line item funding from the county has already been written into those budgets. And so making any changes to those at this time would be very challenging for all of us, but particularly to the smaller libraries. In addition, um, looking at uh, economic trends, uh. People use the library more when they're are, when they are in difficult economic circumstances, and so while we hope that that is not the case. We also know that it is just as important, if not more so, to fund libraries um, in, in difficult times um, with, you know. During inflation or similar circumstances. Finally, I just wanna mention that uh, the current funding model um, based upon circulation of hard copy materials. Is quite equitably distributed throughout the Marion County libraries. On one of the slides that was provided uh, last week, it outlines that um. We loaned as a whole for um, forty-six thousand five hundred items to rural residents of Marion County, that's an approximate number. And about one percent of that was loaned um, by Bussie. And they receive, uh, last year, they received approximately five percent of the total funding from, from the county. Knoxville circulated approximately thirty percent of those materials to um, residents of rural Marion County. And they received approximately twenty-six percent of the county funding. Melcher Dallas Public Library circulated approximately two percent of materials to rural residents of Marion County. And they received about seven percent of the county funding. Pella Public Library circulated approximately twenty-seven thousand five hundred items. Um, and we received about fifty-four percent of the county funding. And then Web Shadele Public Library circulated about two thousand five hundred and eighty-five items, or about six percent of the total materials. Loaned to rural residents of Marion County and they received about eight percent of the funding. So it really is a very equitable model that is currently in place. There are a lot of other models that are used across the state, they are determined county by county. And we have had conversations about alternative funding models. But because uh, the funding, as I mentioned before, does need to be agreed upon by library directors, trustees. City administration and county supervisors, uh, that discussion does need to be done um. Well in advance of our budget planning or for future budgets. So those are just. Um, so those are just a few, um, aspects that I wanted to be able to highlight. And I'm sure myself and any of the other directors would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, ladies, very much, uh, for presenting. Uh, just a general question, what's this, maybe it's in the, maybe it's in the packet. So what funding Knoxville-Pella do you receive from the city?
The total amount?
Yeah.
So, um, for Pella, it is approximately six.
Get your microphone real quick.
Sorry. No, you're fine. So the Pella Public Library receives approximately, um, six hundred thousand from the city of Pella.
Um, and I was, because there was, sorry, because there was a special levy that was passed in two thousand seven, we received property tax, uh, increase then, we received about, I would say eighty-five percent of our total budget, which is about three hundred thousand dollars, um, comes from the city.
So eighty-five percent of the three hundred.
Okay. So we received twenty-three thousand from the board of supervisors. But as, I mean, you know, based on the formula that is, you know, it's a base pay of four thousand dollars to each library and then the other part of the formula is based on, uh, circulation to rural residents. So that's how the formula works.
Yeah, and what, do you guys get other access to funding through grants from local businesses?
We do get, yes, we, we do get grants and we do get a little bit of, um, state funding based on how we meet the standards set by the state library.
Who, who gets the state funding? Do the, do you get state funding?
Not yet, not until we become a tier one.
Which we, we became a tier one three years ago, uh, before that, and then. And the state funding amounted to four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
How much?
Four hundred, the state funding amounted to four hundred and thirty-some dollars for Bussie. Because we are a tier one library. We do not, we are not digitized. We still do the date stamp and the, you know, by hand. That, uh, we could write a grant and probably get money to become digitized. But then there is a yearly cost after that to stay digitized. And because of our small budget, we are reluctant right now to put ourselves at that. We would rather buy a book than be digitized.
Wow. I like that. How much do you guys get from the state? By the way, that four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, they probably employ three people just to send that.
At Knoxville.
I had to say that. I had to say that.
At Knoxville, I think we get about seven thousand eight hundred from the state.
Pella?
On Harwood, what Knoxville receives.
About seven thousand?
Because we have two and three.
Okay.
With all due respect, that brings me back to my initial question. If, if the, I hear the struggles of the smaller libraries, why is not, why are you not looking at restructuring to help them?
Because there are different ways that other counties do it too. And Merrick can, um, speak to this too. But you could look at full-time employment or you could look at the number of hours that the library is open. Um, Pella's open like sixty-some hours in a week. Knoxville's open fifty-two hours a week. And the smaller libraries open less, um, hours per week, you know, so.
So it's, uh, so it's my understanding you've already put this five thousand dollars in your budget before we've even approved it?
But the five thousand, no, we haven't put that in.
No?
This year's budget, but we're planning for next year's budget. But the five thousand dollars that, if we do get the five thousand dollars from the board of supervisors, that'll be in next year's budget, it would mean an increase of one thousand dollars for each of the five libraries.
I'm curious, what would it mean if we hadn't brought it up? I mean, would they have got that thousand dollars that way? I mean, I'm just curious.
That was how our request was, was originally written.
Okay.
Yeah, I struggle with, um, I seeing the smaller libraries and seventy-five percent goes, goes to the cities, the bigger, you know, Knoxville-Pella. And then the such little amount goes to the smaller libraries and they're struggling. And I've, you know, I'm completing, you know, this is my fourth budget cycle and I'm like, it's not changed. And I want, I want us to economically grow. And I think this is one way we can in these smaller cities. I think it'd be inviting. Um, you know, it is important. And so that's why I sent the emails saying, could you go back and could you look at this? Um, is this a way? And I also think it's, it could, for you guys to toot your horn to say, hey, you know, we're, we're helping these smaller libraries. We want, we as Marion County stick together. We want them to survive. Um, I don't know, is it an anomaly that we have five libraries in our county?
No, there are some counties that have more than five and some that have less.
Okay.
Uh, we just think the five thousand dollars would be equally divided among the five of us. And a thousand dollars to Bussie would mean a lot. It would mean buying books and doing more programs.
Yes, Counselor.
I, I have a tendency to agree with you.
Yeah, she has the, yeah, Ed wants to sneak a comment.
I'm speaking now purely as a resident of Pleasantville and I'm just curious from listening to the comments from the board. If you did a hundred thousand, which is what they requested, but you give every library twenty thousand dollars, you divide a hundred by five. I'm curious, what would that mean for the three smaller libraries that are here? What could they really do? And then realistically, how harmful would it be for the two larger libraries? May at what point do they simply go back to their cities and say, we received eight thousand dollars less this year than we thought we were gonna get? Can you please make that the difference? I'm curious what would happen if you just equalized the amounts? And again, that's just a Pleasantville resident.
Good question. I have, I have a tendency to agree with Chairman Ramey to the fact that we have asked the, the rural residents of Marion County to help the city of Pella, to help the city of Knoxville. I, I don't know, I kind of, I kind of feel like it kind of, the onus is on them kind of to help their libraries.
Yeah. No, that's good. Yes, here.
Just a quick comment.
Sorry, we're all electronic here.
Just a quick comment.
Can you identify yourself, ma'am?
Oh, I'm Carrie Carter.
Thank you.
Aye. My kids are opening world in Knoxville, but we are residents of the Bussie area. And I think it's important to keep, and our, our, um, for each group meets at the Pleasantville Library. They've always been welcoming to us. Um, but, uh, it's important to remember too, that rural school districts, their students live rurally. And so, uh, to use, uh, internet and books and things after hours means that they visit their local libraries that they can, uh, have access to because the school is out in the middle of the county. They don't have access to it once they've gone home. And so, uh, Pleasantville I think is, is comparable as well, even though the school district's still there when the school is not accessible to them, um, after hours. It's, they have a lot of rurally living children. And so it's important to keep in mind that when it's underfunded, the doors can't be open to the library, uh, for students to have access to those resources when the school is also closed.
I think we all agree that it's an important thing. It's, the, the, the problem is how do we equitably distribute the funds?
Yeah. So I, I, I've just been doing some math. Again, ladies, thank you for all your comments. I, I, I appreciate that. I, like I said, I tend to look at things holistically. And I don't see funding to the libraries as distinct from any other effort that we're doing with the cities. It wouldn't matter if it was Pleasantville or Bussie or, or Pella. Because you're asking the tax base, and it's one pool of dollars, to support certain activities, whether it's housing developments or TIF programs or funding for the ambulance service, uh, uh, all the different things that we tend to segment into these pools, in these different pools of dollars. I think we've asked our unincorporated residents to say, you're a partner in the economic growth of Marion County through these major housing projects. And I'm sure there will be more requests coming. I'm meeting with Pella city leaders on Thursday. So I think they have stepped up in a significant way to help with the growth of our two largest cities because we know that that will then trickle out to the other cities as well. And hopefully projects will come from those towns then for housing and et cetera. From a statutory standpoint, we're only required to give six cents. Okay, maybe that's too restrictive. But I think if we went down to seventy, we're doing the same thing that we're doing with a lot of our other costs. We're looking at how much we're spending. And if we give ten thousand to each of the large libraries and divide the fifty between the other three, that's sixteen thousand to the small libraries. And if that gets you to tier one status, where you can then access additional funding from the state, even if it's four hundred bucks or something along those lines, does it give you a boost for the things you're trying to accomplish for the kids in Pleasantville and Bussie and Melcher? Because to Carrie's point, they don't necessarily have access after school to some of these other tools. So that, I'm kind of thinking along those lines, Steve, that for one year, maybe we try something a little different. You reduce the line item. You still give a, a good ten thousand dollar contribution to the larger libraries, but you give sixteen-six to the smaller ones.
At what funding level, Mark? Um, I mean, at, at the.
Well, I'm just talking gross dollars. I, whatever that percentage works out to be, I don't.
And I.
I'm not, I'm not gonna get that complicated on the math.
Right. I, I looked at, if you kept it at the ninety-five, even if you moved thirty to Pella, twenty to Knoxville and did fifteen to the smaller, that would be keeping it the same. And then seeing what they can do, um, you know, coming back and seeing what they were able to do with those dollars. That way it's not such a huge hit, um, you know, to every, I mean, it's an increase, obviously, to the smaller ones, but.
I believe you're both saying the same thing, right?
Yep, yep. I mean, it is, it's.
Can I?
Yeah, Keisha, Keisha, you're keeping it up at the ninety-five.
Yeah, yeah.
Level, but you're still doing the same division.
Yeah, I'm doing the same thing, yes.
But doing a different distribution.
Yep, yep, yep.
It, it would really impact, um, well, all of us, obviously. But we're already at, in budget negotiations with our city administrators. And so, I, I mean, this is something we have to bring to our boards and city council and city administrators.
I'm in favor of that idea. Let's try it because we don't know what next year to bring in.
Which ones? Uh, do you want to keep it the same, Steve, and do a thirty-twenty, then an equal split? I think that was Keisha.
Yeah, fifteen, yeah.
I'd like to try that.
Or do you want to go down and do less to the large and give sixteen to the small?
Well, at ninety-five thousand dollars, that, that would be of us, what'd you say, fif- fifteen?
It'd give the smaller ones fifteen and give Pella thirty and twenty. So it's still tiered.
Yeah.
And because of the distribution, but it's not giving them anymore.
Yeah, and I understand I would rather reduce it to seventy because we're over the statutory maximum anyway.
Yeah.
And it, and it takes, it recognizes what our small, what we've asked folks to do for, in, in terms of participating in these housing projects and the other projects they're gonna be asked to participate in, in the future. So we're taking some of that and, and reducing some of those for these kind of public works projects.
Yeah, I was just thinking that since they've already started their budget negotiations, the impact wouldn't be as bad for them to go back and say to the county, or to the cities, yeah.
You're being nice.
I'm being nice. I'm being.
I'm saying.
Yeah.
I, I hate to, to say it, it, it would be a serious issue for, for us. And I certainly want the smaller libraries to receive more funding. I think, but I think it's important that that not be done, um, at the expense of any other, um, any other library. And as has been made clear by the numbers, um, all of the libraries serve the residents of, of rural Marion County. Um, and I, it's important that each of the libraries within the county be, be well-funded.
Unfortunately, when we look at our budgets, we, we have to look at things that some things will have to take a hit if we're gonna keep other services up too. I mean, I, I totally understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. So anyway, I'm open to a motion. I'm not gonna make it. I'll let you two decide what you want to do with it. I think we're kind of all in the same, general, the same.
Yeah, we're in the same vicinity.
But I'm more, I'm, I'm meaner and more draconian than Keisha is.
I'll make the motion of ninety-five thousand. Um, and then thirty thousand of that goes to Pella, twenty thousand goes to Knoxville, fifteen to Pleasantville, fifteen to Melcher Dallas and fifteen to Bussie.
Second.
Jake?
So it's ninety-five thousand, I mean, level thirty to Pella, twenty to Knoxville, fifteen to Pleasantville, fifteen to Melcher Dallas, fifteen to Bussie.
Yep.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you for the discussion, ladies. I appreciate it.
I, I have a question. Okay, it was, it was stated that, um, if we, if the smaller libraries received an increase like this, you'd like to see what we did going forward. But, which we will put to good use. But there's a lot of things, if we know that we're gonna stay at a higher level two years down the road, three years down the road.
Good point.
I know budgets can be cut and everything, but that it would, the, the percentages would stay there. It would help us a lot in our planning as what we do with the funds we receive the first year.
So, so here's something I would, I would say to all of you. And this is what's been done with these funding streams for decades. There's been a view that they'll always kind of stay the same. In other words, you're gonna count on these dollars year over year. Why? Because part of it's built into your salary structures, part of it's built into operation, your OpEx, all those things. What I would tell you is this, don't count on it. I mean, the funding that we're asking from our taxpayers is changing. Their lives are changing. To Steve's point, the, we're trying to keep the overall county budget. We're, we're trying to not increase our levy rates in Marion County. We're trying to actually reduce them. So it's incumbent upon the libraries to not just think, well, it's always going to be this way. Because if you're actively managing a budget, that's not what will happen.
I understand that.
We would have a discussion on what you're doing. The board right now is saying to the smaller libraries, here's your shot. We're, we're, we're looking at this in a different way. We, we recognize what we've asked our smaller towns to do in terms of contributing to some of these major projects from a tax standpoint. So let's see what you got, what you can do with this money. I know that the larger towns can get the funding and I can, we can have that conversation offline with your city administrators. So what can you do, given your constraints? Does this help alleviate some of those? And next year, we'll revisit it and see where we're at. But don't say, don't think it's gonna be fifteen thousand every year.
No, that's not what, I just did not want to have to come back here next year. And because of not knowing from year to year, you say, well, you didn't do what you were.
I, I get what you're saying.
You didn't produce what you should have produced with the increase.
No, I think it's for you to give an honest assessment of what the money did.
Yeah.
Because that's what I, as a board member, that's what I'm gonna ask. The taxpayers gave you this money, what did you do?
Okay.
Right?
I probably wouldn't invest in an addition.
Addition.
I'm just grateful because now I can go back to the city and they're gonna be like, oh, so you have the support of Marion County too, not just the city, but, so I'm, I'm just grateful for that. I'm, I'm, it, yeah, I'm sorry, but I'm like, it's gonna be, we literally don't have anything, any funds besides what they've allocated to us. So this is gonna be, the, thank you. That'll help us.
Nope, I get that.
No, I, I.
Lori and Melcher says, thank you also.
Oh, yes, Lori, thank you for the comment. Thank you. So.
Because we'll utilize every penny. We've, we're good at pinching pennies, so thank you.
Very good, very good. Thank you very much. Good discussion. Thank you for your time, ladies. I appreciate it. Um, is there a motion to close discussion on this item?
So we're.
Yeah, we've already voted on it, so I think we're good. Okay. All right. On number three, right?
Wait, second.
We, we need to second close a discussion. I thought we voted, so I thought that was enough.
What did I ask for?
For a discussion. When we voted.
Second.
I'll wait my turn.
So, sorry, I'm a little confused. Motion to close.
Discussion.
Okay. And there was a second by Mark?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because we're gonna do it anyway.
Okay, you got it. Um, McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Onto item number three, which is, uh, the second reading of ordinance, uh, it's ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash one. It's to approve the second reading of the proposed Marion County Ordinance Submitting Zone Map A1. Bridget will give us the background on this. Now, this is just approval of the second reading. The last meeting, we approved the first reading, we went through all the detail. Had a gentleman's comments this morning to add to that mix. Our next meeting will be the third and final reading where we do the approval, if the board agrees, and the changing to, uh, the ordinance and the zoning maps. So Bridget, take it away.
So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Bridget Muller. I'm the program manager for environmental health. And I typically work with Missy on some of these projects that she has. And she actually left this morning for vacation. She just texted me about fifteen minutes ago, asking how that, told her it hadn't happened yet. So.
We're long-winded, yes.
So, um, this is the second reading and she just, um, her request, um, since there was some new information that was brought to light this last week, um, regarding some uh, vehicles that were moved from the original location to a different location that we were unaware of until Mr. Crabtree's, um, complaint was returned to us. Um, she asked that it be tabled until next meeting, until more investigation can be done.
So she's asking for this item to be.
To be tabled until she gets back. And we can do some more investigation as to what these cars are and, um, how they got there. And were these the same cars that were asked to be moved?
Okay, very good. And we have the gentleman's comments during the comment period this morning to factor into that as well. So board, is there any, uh, desire to table that?
Mr. Ramey, would the board entertain hearing from me on this topic? Because I'm not sure if I can be here next month. That's what I'm here for now. Do you mind?
Do you mind, do you mind coming up here, Carrie?
Do you mind, Bridget? Okay, I just wanted to add, uh, Zach and I are cousins, Mr. Crabtree and I. And the property owners, Billy and Coven Wall, this is a fourth generation farm. It's actually just right wackos if you turn down the little gravel road there, turns into private property. Um, they have just shy of a couple hundred acres of a fourth generation family farm there that's basically like a sanctuary. I mean, it's beautiful and and maintained in ways that, um, most properties are not. And, um, just want the board to consider that the, um, over time, uh, the commercial and industrial properties have kind of encroached on what the family calls Yankee Hollow, which is the name of their farm out there, um, which everyone is excited about growth, um, economic growth within the county. But we would respectfully ask that you consider, um, Mr. Crabtree's proposal, um, in that, uh, it's quite something to be riding your horses or side by side through the family farm and look over, and there's literally a junkyard. Uh, and so if you could take that under serious considerations as as you move forward, that would be great.
Thank you, Carrie, appreciate it. Thank you. Very good. Board, is there a motion to table this per Missy's request?
I move we, uh, table the second reading to Marion County ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one.
I'll second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Remember, when we get to the next board meeting, that we have to untable it. So remember your process.
Yes.
Got that?
Yep.
All right. Very good, thank you. Next, we have, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, which Mid Iowa Planning Alliance Membership and Participation. Carla, welcome.
Yes, this has been a year and coming. Um, we have Gunner online from the MPO that has been working with our kind of region throughout central Iowa. So I'll turn, um, the microphone over to you, Gunner, to go through the presentation.
Thank you, Carla. Um, I have a handful of slides, uh, slides to go through here for you this morning. Uh, welcome any questions along the way. I'd also like to note that Andrew Collins from my office, uh, with whom you've worked on other things as well, um, he's on the line as well. Next slide. So I'm going to go through a little bit of background on where we come to get to this point. Next slide. So real briefly, what an economic development district is, is a couple of different things. One is the designation of a region, uh, given to places uh, by the Economic Development Administration, and that helps it, uh, compete for more grant dollars and be more competitive, uh, and also receive more assistance in times of disaster. And then it also refers to the organization that supports it, so the EDD organization. Um, central Iowa hasn't had one. Um, and the reason it typically doesn't qualify, but it does qualify in special circumstances, such as a pandemic, when they're all under a a national disaster declaration. Uh, next slide. So one of the big reasons why this has been pursued is this notion that we're trying to make Iowa whole. Um, and Mid Iowa has been missing out on funding over the years uh, because EDDs are often the first to receive disaster funding. Uh, for example, we missed out on nearly five hundred thousand dollars in no match funding from the CARES Act because we are lacking an economic development ministry, an EDD. I will further note that by not having an EDD, we've been less competitive for grant dollars. And on the right is the some count, some numbers that we pulled through some investigation. And these numbers are about a year old now. Um, but we pulled three years' worth of investment into Iowa from the EDA and found that, you know, they were spending, you know, six, five, six times as much outside central Iowa as inside central Iowa. One caveat I want to note here is that these spending levels are are not normal on this, like some of the stimulus dollars, um, as of, you know, as of a year ago. Next slide. So we've been working through the process, as Carla noted, and I would like to thank Carla. She's been involved from the very beginning, has been a very, uh, great stakeholder in Marion County. Um, so, you know, we weighed support, uh, had a lot of stakeholder discussions with towns in, uh, Marion County and throughout the region, as well as to meet a conversation with this group. Um, and then we went through the process, you know, having gotten that support, we went through the process of creating an entity, um, formed the entity, put together a due structure, formed a board, um, put together a comprehensive economic development strategy. And then we've been in phase three, four, you know, since last fall. We submitted all the materials for designation, um, and we're awaiting the final approval. And we're just about on the cusp of launching operations, uh, which we anticipate to be April one. Next slide. So as noted, we did talk to all the boards of supervisors in the region. I'd like to thank you for your adoption, uh, it's about a year ago where you said, yes, we agree with the creation of an economic development ministry, in economic development district. Uh, we could not have formed one without that. Uh, so we appreciate your support there. It should be noted that your colleagues and all the other county in the region also voted unanimously for that support. And we also had a letter of support from the governor and Debbie Durham at IEDA. Next slide. And also want to note that it is official now, uh, what we've been waiting for all these months and working toward, um, is official. We received a note from the deputy, uh, or excuse me, the Assistant Secretary of Commerce for Economic Development, uh, notifying us that we have officially been designated as an economic development district. Next slide. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about what membership would look like. Next slide. So some of the big benefits here are relationships with federal agencies. Um, a couple of stats on this. There are eighty-nine cities and seven counties in our region. And the the EDA has a central region that includes ten states. See, you can imagine that their staff at EDA can can possibly have relationships with everybody. Um, but what the EDD does, it kind of helps make those connections where we can have, we can have relationships with all the people, uh, in our region and then translate that to relationships with the EDA and help with some of those funding, help chase some of those funding dollars. Um, and other benefits include access to disaster funds, uh, grant writing administration. That will be a core service that MIPA offers to its member jurisdictions, um, along with, uh, support such as technical assistance, matchmaking, some local planning. And then also, uh, members would have the option to contract with MIPA for some of those larger planning initiatives, like comp plans or zoning updates, interim renewal plans. Oftentimes, oftentimes hiring those planning services in that manner can be a more economical way for jurisdictions to do it. Uh, the region will benefit from having an economic development strategy, or or SEDS, and basically allows you to check a box on certain grant applications. And it bypasses a lot of work that you have to do with some of the, uh, federal grant applications. Lastly, I'll note that, like, you can have, as a member, you'll get projects listed in the SEDS project list. And this just tells the fed, federal grant makers that the local project fits the regional priorities. Next slide, please.
Gunner, there was a question?
Uh. Oh.
When when this, the second bullet point, access to disaster funds, was that, was that funds that will be above and beyond FEMA?
Correct, I'm referring to disaster funds that come through the EDA. Um, and so that would be, you know, kind of, FEMA is more up, and people who work more closely with this than I do would have a better sense of it. But, you know, FEMA is more upfront, immediate disaster response. And the EDA might be in the economic recovery from disaster.
Okay.
Um, and it can look a couple of different ways. One is, as I mentioned, you know, there are occasions in a disaster world where there will be an immediate flux of dollars, um, for the initial economic response. But there's also, you know, grant programs, such as the American Rescue Plan that's active right now, uh, that are, that you can go after as well.
I know, one of the examples that I know from Area Fifteen that we're, um, involved with a little bit, um, they use some of those funds to give out during COVID, some small business grants directly to businesses that were impacted by COVID. So that was one of the programs that came out of some of their, so it's geared more towards the financial side of a disaster than the actual what the emergency is.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, where were we? Next slide, I think. Yeah, so this is a little bit about the funding and dues. Uh, the way that we're going to pay for staffing the Economic Development District, um, organization is through a federal grant program called the Partnership Program. This is with the EDA again, and they will provide up to seventy thousand dollars annually to add capacity or staffing, basically. And that needs to be a match with local dollars. Um, and we anticipate that's program starting April one, and all signs indicate that that is the case. So the way we've done this is set membership dues for the inaugural period at fifteen cents per capita. Um, and so for Marion County, then, that comes to twenty-one seventy-nine for the first fifteen months. Um, and the reason we've pro rata for fifteen months is because we're in this stage of just starting this organization and the grant funding is going to kick in on April one. We just had to do it fifteen months because then, uh, by the following enrollment period, we will have, we will on your own budget calendar, and I'll just align more cleanly with your own budgeting. I I would, uh, also should note that future rates could be adjusted by the board directors. Next slide. So as of last week, membership stood at forty-five jurisdictions. I won't read them all to you here, but suffice to say that there's been a lot of interest in this and we're very, uh, pleased at the interest and will be wanting to hustle to show, uh, return on value right out of the gate. Next slide. So a little bit about the structure and representation here. MIPA was formed as a bylaw for nonprofit, that was on the legal, that was on the advice of our legal counsel. We didn't make sure that that structure met EDA requirements. Board of Directors, uh, one representative per jurisdiction. Uh, and there's, you know, also two private sector representatives per county. And I mean lowercase geographical area county in that case. Um, as well as one each from ISU, DMAC, and the Greater Line Partnership. Um, billed as the major pieces, budget bylaws, SEDS, contract authority of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, but as you can imagine, a board of that size is pretty cumbersome. And so we think it's going to be very important to have, uh, an executive committee. Uh, that is going to be comprised of two city or county reps from within each county, as well as one private rep from each county. And then lastly, I'll note that they'll have day-to-day decision-making, uh, on the board's behalf, including contract authority up to fifty thousand dollars. And that contract authority isn't so much spending as it is accepting contracts, uh, because a lot of the MIPA's work will be contract with organizations. And lastly, that link there is, uh, free to check out the full bylaws if you're so interested. Next slide, please. So the way this is going to look is MIPA will hire a senior planner. The job posting actually was just published today. And, um, MIPA will also contract with the MPO for back office support and administrative and planning support, um, including accounting and auditing, staff supervision, and office space, uh, et cetera, uh, which means that people like myself and Andrew, uh, will continue to be involved in MIPA, though you'll have a dedicated staff person as well. Next slide, please. So to summarize, uh, the reasons that we think, uh, the reasons that we'd like you to consider joining are, one, those relationships to federal agencies, those access to, uh, funding disaster dollars. And we think there's a lot of value in planning services. Um, and one thing that we've heard from a lot of jurisdictions that they've considered this is they view it as a low barrier of entry with a potential high return on investment, uh, which is to say, you might, you know, say you pay in for several years and then you get one large grant, your ROI is going to look very, uh, good. And lastly, we'll note that the the comprehensive economic development project, strategy will include a project list with local projects. I think that's it for me for my slides. So I I'd like to pause here and ask if there's any questions I might answer.
I want clarity on, uh, Gunner, regarding the twenty-one seventy-nine, is that a month? Is that total? What, I want to make sure I under, I'm reading that correctly.
The twenty-one seventy-nine represents the first fifteen-month period of dues. And so that would be all in through June thirty of twenty twenty-two. And then the following year would, it would likely be an amount smaller than that for a twelve-month period.
June of twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty-two, right?
Yeah, twenty twenty.
Yeah, thank you, thanks.
But is that monthly or is that year? Okay, okay.
That's for a fifteen-long period.
Great, okay. Just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly, okay.
Yeah, great.
In regards, Carla or Gunner, whoever wants to answer answer this, and the benefits, the comprehensive economic development strategy, what what are your thoughts there? I mean.
We were involved, um, we've had, uh, five of us from the county be involved in this process of developing the SEDS because like Gunner had talked about, when you go to fill out any grant application from the EDA especially, that is one of the first questions you're asked is, do you have a SEDS or are you part of a SEDS? And so as part of that process, the five of us from the county were the representatives in developing this initial SEDS that had to be turned in with the application, which was left fairly broad because of the fact that we were just formulating it. But myself, um, Don DeWard is Mayor of Pella, uh, Heather from the city of Knoxville, uh, Joe Mercic from the city of, uh, Pleasantville, and Dylan Morris as the, um, private, um, entity or representing a private business has been the five that have been involved in the process of developing the SEDS from our county. And each of the other counties have five people as well.
Is Pleasantville part of this? Because I didn't see them on.
They have not yet approved it. I know Joe has been talking about it, I don't know where they are in the process.
Okay.
But Pella, Knoxville, Melcher.
I see he's on it.
Have all approved.
Okay.
At this point.
All right. I don't have any further questions.
And we did, um, review this as our board, our commission. Uh, my commission, uh, approved this recommendation to join. And we have evaluated our budget and we have funding within our budget that we can pay for that.
Okay.
How would we take advantage of grant writing and what? What kind of prioritization would there be amongst all the entities? And is there additional cost associated with grant writing?
Each of the entities would have a represent, that each of the member entities, so like the cities that have already joined, they would have representation so they'd be able to prioritize, you know, their projects and that kind of thing, just like us as the county. Um, and I think how they kind of explained to it, there'd be a base level of research and assistance that would be available. Um, certainly if it's to a large-scale project, a major project, there might occur some additional fees if it takes too much staff time. But that's how I understand it. Gunner, you can fill in.
Yeah, you touched on a couple, a few different things that I'd like to address. One is, um, is there a cost to the grant writing? And if you're a member and you want to work on a grant, you go after a grant, there would be no cost to you for MIPA to assist with that grant writing. And let's say we're successful in getting that grant for you, and you said, well, great, we don't want to deal with the headache of administering this grant, you do it. Uh, at that point, there would be an additional cost, however, it would come out of the grant itself, and so the jurisdiction would be net neutral in terms of that. In the case where a jurisdiction would want more in-depth support for, uh, planning process and they wanted us to wanted us to write a comprehensive plan, that would be a level of staff time that we, you know, couldn't in good conscience give to one jurisdiction because it would sap, um, staff time. But with an added on contract at a reasonable rate, we'd be able to add capacity to do some of those, you know, deeper planning processes. So there's going to be some core services that are available at, you know, no cost beyond regular membership dues. And then you have the option, if you want to go after or to work with us on some of those larger planning processes. And then also, I want to touch on one point, there you use the term or phrase like prioritizing grants. I want to make sure that you're aware that there the cities aren't getting competition with one another in terms of, uh, MIPA. MIPA is not going to be a gatekeeper. It doesn't decide who gets grant funding. If every single city in your county says we want to go after this grant funding, our response is going to be, great, how can we help? And it will be up to the granting agency as to who gets what grants. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that there's not regional politics involved in who gets what slices of the pie. That's not the role that MIPA is going to play.
Thank you.
Board, any additional questions? Carla, anything else you want to add?
No, it's been a an interesting process. Like I said, we've observed what these Economic Development Districts do from the outside with Area 15 over the years, um, and think it could provide us that next level of support we need to look at some of those complicated EDA fundings, especially with the idea of having that SEDS in place because it is one of the first questions you're asked. And without that, you have to go through a lot more, um, difficulties in applying for those federal monies.
Right. Okay, very good. Board, is there a you need an action on this, right?
Approval of the resolution.
Is there is there an action on this resolution?
I move we approve Resolution 2022-28.
I'll second.
Johnr.
Hi.
McHolmes.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi. Carla, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gunnar.
Now we have a discussion on Impact, the homeless prevention program. Is there somebody from Impact on the line?
There is. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Good morning, Anne.
Hi. Good morning, I'm Anne Bacon with Impact Community Action Partnership, and we certainly appreciate having, uh, some time when you're very, very busy agenda today. I have two colleagues along with me, um, Terry Spears and Brandon Pollard. But to, uh, be as brief as possible, um, Impact serves families in five counties in central Iowa, including Marion County. We used to, um, be housed in one of your facilities, and we have no longer, we're no longer occupying that space. We, uh, have been working with the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund on preparing an application to be able to leverage some, um, funding from the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund to assist very low-income families in our service area. To put that in perspective, when we talk about very low-income, that's 30% of the area median in Marion County, that's a family of four that earns less than $22,850. And we are writing a grant to the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund that requires match, requires, um, local match. And we are requesting that Marion County, um, provide $1,739, which would leverage additional $6,224 to assist very low-income families to avoid eviction homelessness and to help stabilize those households. The program would allow us to assist families, um, with one month of, um, assistance in, um, a challenging situation. In the with with not being able to provide more than the fair market rent in your area and in Marion County, the fair market rent is listed as either $5 for a two-veteran. We currently provide this service in Marion County and, um, last year provided this service to 21 families utilizing other funding sources. The difference between what we have been doing and what we will be doing is that, um, need for that fair market rent currently, we are limited to being, um, able to assist with about $300 per, um, household, and this will allow us to cover an entire month's rent. We estimate with this funding, we would be able to help an additional, um, 11 families in Marion County in the upcoming fiscal year.
Very good, thank you.
We did provide a letter, there's an odd paragraph at the end of the letter that we have discovered with many jurisdictions are, um, I don't know, some are unaware, some didn't understand that partnering with us would require this. The state auditor has determined that, um, uh, the taxpayer-funded jurisdictions can't donate money to nonprofits. So just for clarity, this would be a contracted service provided to Marion County through a contract, um, in order to, uh, stay in line with what the state auditor's office has determined around, um, funding between, um, government entities and nonprofits.
Okay, so, yeah.
So what questions do you have?
Appreciate that, Anne. Yeah, we were aware of that, and I appreciate you, uh, making clarity there. I'll speak a little bit since I'm on the Impact, um, I'm the representative there. So Anne, are you asking, you're not asking for any additional dollars other than the 1739? Just making sure.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Because in the past, we've done some in-kind and we've done some, um, you know, so I just want to make sure for clarity.
Right. I mean, coming out of, um, the pandemic, um, we are trying to rebuild our services in all the rural areas and, uh, want to be, um, careful of how we begin expanding once again. And so this was, uh, we thought was a great way at a fairly low cost to, uh, local jurisdictions to bring more additional services to the area.
So this funding that you're asking, is this something coming from, is that that Andrew Collings? Is he the one that?
Yep.
Over soon, okay. All right. And Kim, I'm going to ask our public health director. Do Kim, do you have any, I mean, are we doing anything that's duplicating this at all? Or, um?
Normally, we.
Hang on a second.
We refer over to them.
Yeah.
We refer over to Impact. And, um, yeah, we have not paid a lot of rental fees through general assistance, but some. But whenever we can, we refer to other places.
Okay. So Anne, if we did, if we were not to match this, then you don't get the 6224.
Correct.
Is there a guarantee that you get that if we match that?
We, it's an application. I mean, it's, you know, up to the funder, uh, to grant it, but we've had a really, um, strong relationship with Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund through this, um, process. And we are feeling very confident. However, you can absolutely make it contingent on the acceptance of that grant. In other words, you can, um, provide that money as matched to this grant, and if we don't get the grant, then we don't.
So that would be. That would be in the contractual.
Right.
Verveage, okay.
Correct.
And that's a good question, I think.
Sorry, I I stayed on, this is Andrew.
Hi, Andrew.
Hi. And I can speak to that a little bit. We'll actually know here fairly soon, the Housing Trust Fund Board is meeting at noon today to determine how the those dollars are allocated. So, um, I'll be having letters out in the next couple of days on what the board decides on how they want to fund things. And I will note with that, uh, this year, we have $370,000 in available to award, and we've received requests of $750,000. So we'll be, uh, doing a lot of discussion later today to determine how to figure out where the dollars should go.
Well, Andrew, can I put in a little plug for us in Marion County?
Please do.
We would, we would appreciate, you know, if we if we were to agree to this as a board, we'd appreciate that because a lot of times it seems like those bigger counties get a lot more funding.
I understand, and, uh, just to note too, we actually do have requests from other, um, entities in Marion County. The Habitat for Humanity has applied for dollars, as well as the Maltr Dallas, both per owner, after fire repairs. So a lot of, lot of things to discuss, like I said, later today. But duly noted, I'll let the board know.
Yes.
Steve, anything else?
Well, I guess I'd have to see the contract. I wouldn't be opposed to it as long as the contractual language.
Well, I think he's going to need something by this afternoon if he's.
Uh, no, we wouldn't need this contractual language between us until.
No, but you would need a you would need a commitment for the dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
May I ask, what what is the percentage match?
It's currently, I think, and Andrew could say it better than I, it's it's just under right now 17%, uh, 16.1 something.
Yep, and that and that local match is basically just passing on the required local match from our, the Iowa Finance Authority funding that we get. We just pass that on to the grantees.
So you're going to give it back to me, right, Andrew, if we don't get it?
That's absolutely right. Every single dollar the grantees, uh, provide for local match goes back to the budget.
And we won't ask for this money unless.
Contingent upon receipt of the grant or approval of the grant. If you're in favor of it. Yeah, is there, uh, is there a motion on this request?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve upon contingency that you receive the matching funds, um, the, what's it called? Local Housing Trust Fund, is that is that correct? I don't know what you guys call.
Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund.
Yeah, Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund.
Second.
McHolmes.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnr.
Hi.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Memorandum of Agreement for Cybersecurity Assessments between the Iowa National Guard and Marion County. Andrew.
Gotta be quick, I'm not asking for any money.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. I like you already.
So, um, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to read this, uh, MOA from the Iowa National Guard, but this is something that, uh, is kind of designed for, well, it's legislatively for for Jake's office for elections, uh, but we kind of take the opportunity to sometimes broaden the scope to some other areas. But in years past, we've done, uh, assessments of our cybersecurity through third parties. Last time, we used CISA through Homeland Security. And, um, this time, we're looking at using the Iowa National Guard. They have a cybersecurity, uh, division. So that's what this is for.
Can I stop right there? Because I I did look through it. Ed, did you look through this? All right. Why would we use the guard rather than homeland?
So the the SOS is considering changing their requirements to use the Iowa National Guard, uh, rather than Homeland Homeland Security. Homeland Security is, has a hard, really hard time making assessments for 99 counties. And so, um, because they are local and they have the manpower to do it, that's why the the SOS is considering using.
How how good are they? And my question, but when we're talking about the guard versus the federal government, are the capabilities similar to do cybersecurity assessments? What what do they do?
Yeah, so they have a a cyber division, the Iowa National Guard does, and that's these folks, um, from, from the looks, from the reviews that I've I've seen and the and the conversations I've had with them, they I I feel like they're going to be really good for us.
And I will say, I will add this, um, my brother-in-law is with DCI in in cyber. That's what's, that's what he does. And I reached out to him because I was a little befuddled on this, too. He he was very supportive, and he did, he did feel that, um, it is, it's important that we do this, so.
Yep, so and then the other piece of this puzzle is, uh, if there's any sort of, uh, and and it's written right in the purpose there, if there's any sort of cyber issue or incident during an election, the SOS will call in the National Guard. That's who they will call in. They will not call in CISA, they will not call in Homeland Security, that's who they'll call in. So if there will happen to be any sort of, uh, cyber event during an election or something that we happen to experience, that's who we would have.
Jake, you heard about this?
Not that aspect, no. The assessment part, um, Secretary of State has been given rules that we have to provide assessments and think that it it's an assessment, my understanding is, it's not. Assessment is a re- is a requirement, but, um, how you proceed from an assessment is up to each individual.
Yeah.
So from an election integrity standpoint, this is really the Secretary of State through the National Guard doing an assessment for election purposes. So they'd rather go with the state than the feds.
Yeah, and we can, we can limit the scope to just that, um, and that's perfectly fine when we do it that way.
And just to be clear, this is not having anything to do with our voting equipment. That is not, that is standalone equipment. This is, um, like iVoters is, is a statewide database that we use, it's it's that type of, this this doesn't touch our voting equipment. This is more.
Correct.
The the technology side on the.
It's all our computer systems that talk specifically to the Secretary of State's databases. That's what it involves.
That's what it involves.
Yeah. Not our voting equipment.
So mostly the auditor's office, we have a few other computers throughout the county, but it's mostly the auditor's office.
It won't be channeled through DOD or anything like that?
Yeah.
Want to bet. Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, so that's basically the purpose of this is to, uh, continue the legislative rules on these, on the, uh, election, uh, infrastructure. We did have council look at it. There were some changes that needed to be made, um, regarding some of the language in here. They made those recommended changes that Ed's office had, so.
You give it to Ed?
Yeah, we took a look at the, we took a look at the original proposal. There was some language in there about forum that I didn't like, about some whose obligations certain issues were, and they quickly said, we agree, and made those changes immediately. So from that.
We've gotten nothing but cooperation in this process so far. I feel like it's it's has the potential to be very good for us.
Okay.
So this document reflects those changes, Ed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no question, we need to have threats assessed, especially in the cybersecurity area. It is certainly an area that, uh, is very mysterious because there's always a new threat every, you know, every minute.
And to your point, Tamara, I mean, I reached out to this as a team that did our assessment last time, and they said they're basically, they told me they're three to four years out.
Okay.
For us to do it again.
Okay.
So.
So the need is now, you think?
Yeah, I I feel like the more often we can have our, uh, stuff assessed by third-party neutral parties, um, that helps us out, that helps IT out, making sure that, um, if they see something that we didn't see, it helps us fix that, you know? So I'm always open to qualified individuals, uh, looking at our, at our stuff from a overview standpoint. Obviously, we have to limit the data that they see, but, uh, we can do that, that's that's not a problem.
No, and I and I get it, I'm I'm a I'm a private sector guy when it comes to this stuff, and I always get nervous when we start interlinking with government agencies, even if it's the National Guard. Because that, we we've already seen some of that at the national level, right? On what that means. So, anyway, probably something we need to do.
It it checks a box for us on part of our requirements. Andrew's on the front end of this a little bit, um, which is fantastic, he always takes good care of us, so I do rely on him for all of those, um, security issue type things from that standpoint.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, Board, on this one?
No.
All right. And you need an approval of this? All right. And you need an approval of this agreement, Andrew?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve this cybersecurity agreement?
I'll make that motion in a second.
Remy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Special event application, Knoxville Farmers Market is Judy on.
I don't, I don't know that she is. I, I have not communicated with her.
Any, any issues with this?
She's turned in everything to us that is, is required from an administration standpoint. I, Chris is here. I think maybe they changed where they wanted location a little bit or something.
Chris, comments?
It's easier, my blood's flowing now, so. Yeah, so as you can see on the map, um, they've got some spots on the north side and the south side. I am not in favor of that. I'm in favor of the Knoxville Farmers Market entirely. But we have one entrance to the courthouse, being the south entrance. I, I, I'm not in favor of the parking at all or taking any stalls up on the south side of the square.
Okay.
Of our building. If they wanna shift those spots over to the north side, I'm perfectly okay with that, but no spots past the southwest corner.
This application doesn't reflect that?
No, you can see she's got drawn around the uh, the south side of the courthouse.
Okay.
So.
So we want uh no south side?
No south side spots at all.
Okay, and that's the only?
That's my only issue with it, other than um in the past, we've had some contention in the courthouse uh between event organizers and employees that are parking on the east side during those special event days. Um, my response to Mrs. Kenny has been post-signs. Um, would stop the dialogue going in between courthouse staff uh or people that have just parked to come do business, because some of them have had conversations to like, hey, I'm, I'm here to do my business, then you came out and said, I have to, I have to move. Let's just post signs, and if someone's taking a stall up, someone's taking a stall up. Because it is still a, a public building and there are days where it is extremely busy. So that would, that would be my recommendation if we were going to approve this again in that location. Signs only, no conversations with staff or uh citizens that are using courthouse if they happen to park in a spot and didn't know because they were parked prior to a sign going up.
When you say signage, are you talking about like a day before the event?
I'm, I'm talking like maybe that morning. So Tuesday morning, come, go put signs out saying, hey, starting at one o'clock, which she has been doing a great job of. I, I need to make sure that continues to go that way. But no south side parking and signage has to be used to cut down on some of the uh rough conversations folks have been having on that day, so.
All right.
Other than I'm in complete favor.
Very good, thank you. Chris, all right. Any comments, discussion, Board?
I think if we can get those two things clarified, I think it's good. I like the farmers market.
Steve?
No, I, I, I under- understand Chris's concerns and totally agree with him. I just don't, don't know how to word the motion.
Well, just, let's approve the application pending uh appropriate signage and agreement on no south side parking. Counselor?
Just to provide the Board, Tuesday is arguably our busiest day, having members of public utilizing the court system. It is our uh associate district court, and it happens both in the morning and the afternoon.
So is this not advantageous at all in? I mean?
No, I, I am the same as Chris. I, I support the Knoxville Farmers Market. Uh, it's a great thing for our community. I, I would just share that there have been, uh, I'm not sure what the language Chris used was, but.
Rough, I believe, was the term.
There has been altercations or interactions between individuals running the farmers market uh upset with people who have parked and then not realizing the farmers market is going on later that day.
Can we uh?
And just Tuesday's a busy day for the courts.
Sure, and, and to be quite, I mean, to follow up on what Chris said, it's a public building. If we have court there or people are there to pay their taxes or do those things, we can rescind this. I mean, if people cannot conduct themselves in a manner that's understanding among all parties, we don't have to do this. So we can just put that out there as a board that we support it, but I mean, due respect needs to be given for people who are doing business at the courthouse and maybe didn't see the sign. Otherwise, we won't have farmers market there. So. So Steve, the motion, it would be approval pending um signage and agreement on no south side parking.
Okay, yeah, approval that we all play together well, right?
Or you could say it that way, yeah.
I, yeah, okay, I. I approve the application with Chris and Ed's considerations taken into thought.
Nope, no south parking and appropriate signage usage.
Correct.
Is there a second? There is a second, all right.
John?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. And then I would say, gentlemen, if you hear of these things.
Yes.
Let us know, because like I said, we can say it, ah, we're done.
Sometimes people are eating at the restaurant and it goes longer or whatever, and then they come back and their cars are parked away. It's, sometimes it's adventurous.
That's a good one you said.
Adventurous.
We don't need.
That's a good one.
It's not just courthouse.
It appears that Tuesday is probably the biggest headache. Uh, I don't know, maybe in the future, if this, if, if they don't get it worked out, maybe we just exclude Tuesdays altogether. I don't know.
All right, we have a uh, next item is a vacancy. So as was discussed, I think it was our last meeting, Jake, did Karen announce? Or am I already, two meetings behind already?
Karen Schwanbeck, Marion County Recorder, terminated her resignation, I believe, at the last board meeting.
And Lisa, we have that in writing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have to uh discuss a vacancy and the appointment of a um, what would we call this, Ed? A temporary recorder or a?
It's simply you are appointing the next Marion County Recorder.
Up in, yeah. Okay, so you see in the stack, Ed, uh, I don't know if Jake invited this or Ed, but we have uh the legal requirements for that. Ed, do you have anything you wanna add to that before we do this?
No, I, I, we've forwarded to Jake's office and I'm certainly forwarding to you, kind of the timeline requirements. The, the most interesting issue is what is a vacancy actually created? And because there's some deadline requirements to allow the public to potentially petition uh for, in essence, a special election prior to our next uh election. I, I think it's easy that most people think that the vacancy currently exists. The reality is the vacancy does not exist until the first day that our current recorder does not continue to work. There is not uh clear language. We did provide the site to the Attorney General's opinion, which we found was helpful uh to use. But I think Jake has the, the dates in front of you as to when you need to do certain things. So at this point, it's really just providing notice to the public of your intent to appoint, but I would indicate to you, you should not appoint until there is a vacancy and there is not currently a vacancy at this time.
Got it, got it. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir. I have provided some um documents of just tentative timeline, those types of things. Ed's office did follow-up research on that and amended the timeline a little bit for that fourteen days. It's another one that was forwarded. The timeline, the second timeline would be the one you would want to um is, is what would be recommended to be used.
Yes, and I, and I agree with that, Jake. So right now you just need an intent of the Board?
I believe that would be the next step in this process, once the, the recorder has made the announcement is, is the Board's intent to um appoint or go to um Countywide Special.
Sure.
This um office is um on the ballot uh for the, this coming primary in June and general election in November as well. So um either way, that is still in play. Um, if the primary, if you want to run through the primary, you still need to file all appropriate paperwork and all that regardless of, of what you guys are doing here.
Right, so to, so today the, the, the Board action, to be specific, is intent to appoint the vacancy or inten- intent to fill the vacancy by appointment.
Correct.
And uh instruct you to publish notice at the appropriate time.
Right, that, that starts that timeline, uh which we would then publish in the paper um for follow-up meetings and for, for follow-up.
Right.
Right, in essence, all you're saying today is that you, as a board, you are exercising your right to appoint rather than simply say that this is going to a special election at this time, and then there's other dates that we'll have to comply with.
Got it. Naomi, you still wanna do this?
Yep.
Okay, just one, just one, before we do this, all right. Very good. Any discussion, Board?
No, I think that, that cleared it up.
Yep.
All right. Is there a motion on uh our intent to appoint to fill the Marion County Recorder vacancy once it becomes vacant and to instruct Jake to publish notice thereof?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Nestvee, VA demolition project, change order number one.
You gotta love that, change order number.
Number one.
So I wanted to start the conversation off with, and this is gonna be a very quick deal. Um, last board meeting, I shared with you that we are ahead of schedule with all that we found, and we're below budget. That statement takes what I am going to talk about today into consideration. I just wasn't on the agenda to talk about these numbers. So the statement I made last board meeting is still just as true with the approval of this. So, um, original contract about six point seven two eight million, three hundred and one. Uh, what I'm proposing today with the demolition of the boiler room, so that's both seventy-seven and seventy-five, so that's boiler plant and chiller plant, um, all abatement to go along with that. And also the additional eleven percent increase in asbestos that we found to date on campus. Also the additional seventeen hundred and fifty foot of tunnel system that no one knew existed. Um, that was full of asbestos. That's where that eleven percent additional asbestos based off our original numbers came from. Um, total for all those things that I'm asking the Board to consider changing would be three hundred thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and fifty-four cents, which takes our new contract price to seven million, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, roughly seven twenty-nine and ten, yeah, a little over seven million. Really a great step for us to move forward. Um, I know we're still gonna be under that close to a million dollars that I originally talked about. We will still be under that, barring any other massive uncovering that takes place, but we are ahead of schedule. And we uh, we are definitely under budget. So I'm asking today that you guys had approved change order number one in the amount of three hundred thousand, uh, seven hundred and nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Very good, and Jake, still fits within all of our bonding requests?
The bond was um inclusive of Chris's contract and then um the uh tipping fees, I guess, was. So they had the contract and then the tipping fees, the estimate for the eleven million dollar bond issued. We received proceeds of just over the ten million, two hundred thousand or something.
Very good.
That's what we have, so.
That change order included the tipping fees, is that correct?
Uh, I did not.
This isn't.
There's no change.
There's no change.
The tipping fees, yeah.
Okay.
No.
The fees for the, the landfill fees are going separate in this contract.
All right.
Yeah, originally we had estimated between three million, three million, five hundred thousand dollar landfill fees um as of last board meeting with the current claim that I had submitted uh that day, or last, actually last Tuesday. Uh, we were at like one point six eight, so we're doing really well. And again, I'll reiterate, the reason we're doing really well is because VINT is going the extra mile to separate. Um, there's not, not a day that goes by that I'm not seeing somebody pull rebar out of a, a pile that would be going to the dump. Instead, it's going off for uh scrap recycling. So that's the reason our, our landfill charges are substantially lower than we anticipated.
Right, and the major reason for the change is Knoxville decided not to retain that boiler plant?
Yes.
So, as part of our contract with them to dump, demolish those buildings, uh they decided not to retain that building.
Yeah, we originally had intended for that building to stay.
Right.
And there, that's the reason we need a change order to demolish that building for the public's knowledge.
Yep.
That is why we are now talking about that.
Yep. Very good. Questions?
I don't have any.
No.
Very good to have a six, or now a seven million dollar project with this being our first change order. There's, that's pretty good.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, that's pretty good. It's still fitting in the total budget, so I would entertain a motion to approve this change order number one.
I'm moving to approve the VA demolition project change order number one.
I'll second that.
Remy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. And now an update.
Not much of an update.
Unless you just, that was the update.
I guess we could call that the update. We obviously just approved our first change order number one on the project. Uh, takes total contract a little over seven million. We're knocking down buildings. Um, if you've been by recently, the piles get smaller and smaller every day. Seventy-four is just about one hundred percent gone. Yeah, now we'll move on to the boiler and chiller plant with the approval of this today. So when it's done, you should have the laundry facility on campus on the north side, and then we'll be shifting resources to the south side to finish those last six buildings.
Excellent. Excellent, very good.
Where are we at on uh the, for, in regards to the laundry facility and um pulling out the equipment in there? Are we, are we still going to, are we still looking for bits for that? Still gonna discuss that?
I actually have a cost. Uh, that cost has not changed based off of our last meeting, uh, two hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. That's an interior, complete interior gun to the laundry facility. Um, that would be entirely up to you as a board on when you choose that you wanna move down that path.
That, I'm gonna wait on a little bit, because that's part of what they're discussing in demand right now.
Right.
As to whether we get access to those funds to actually do that. So we got two tranches of money, a million from the RIF fund uh to, to actually apply to uh current debt load if we choose to do so, and then a million for that property specifically. Potentially do that and some other prep work. So we'll see what happens. See if the legislature comes through.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a motion to close discussion on this item?
Moving to close discussion on item ten.
A second.
John?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
Very good, we will open the public hearing, Marion County FY twenty-three property tax levy. Mr. Grandi?
So this is part of the overall budgeting process. Um, this does not mean that your budget is um, there's still the whole, another public hearing, official approval, all those things. This is a requirement that came in a couple of years ago through legislation um that each city and county um need to give notice of a maximum dollar amount of property taxes that they could collect. Uh, this is a form as created by the state, and it shows the um valuations from last year, the valuations this year, and then the proposed maximum amount of, of tax dollars um that, that you could ask for. Uh, there is a timing element to this, a publication notice in ten and twenty days, so um based off the very initial round of budget discussions, um, I submitted this to the newspapers and, and for you today for this public hearing. Based off of uh a tax levy of three dollars and fifty cent for your general fund, which is what the county's had forever. Um, the general supplemental fund at the two dollars and forty cent level, that was the equi- exactly the same as last year's, and three dollars and ninety-five cent for the rural services. Again, a maximum, uh, the maximum dollar amount that you could, could get. Uh, not a lot of flexibility there. You can go less than that. You, what this um is indicating to our taxpayers is that you will not ask for more than this. Um, so subsequently, in subsequent meetings, uh, the Board has um chosen to actually reduce uh the supplemental by the twenty cents. So again, well within what's happening here, this is just a not to exceed. This is the public hearing for folks to comment on.
Right. So maybe just high-level folks, Jake, walk through the result of item column one, two, three. What are we looking at there?
So, um.
Since it is the public hearing.
Right, so. Right, so, uh, current year certified property tax would be the levels amount of this year's amount. Um, the column two, uh, would be with our current valuations, and, um, then that, basically, the equivalent dollar amount, uh, and it would show that for that same amount of money, it would be five dollars and sixty-seven cents for the general, general supplemental, as opposed to the five ninety of last year. That is, that is Marion County's being blessed to have some taxable valuation growth. So, the, the second column is showing what the levy would be at, from last year to this year's valuation amount. Okay? So, the next one is, uh, what you are not going to exceed, I guess. Um, and as we've discussed in earlier meetings, you have very little flexibility in actually the levies that you can adjust or set, within reason, right?
Right.
So, um, the three dollars and ninety-five cents for the general fund is included in this, and then, um, like we said, that it would be column three, uh, general supplemental. That amount would be at the levy rate equal to last year, the two dollars and forty cents. So, subsequently, you guys are, um, uh, gonna reduce that to two twenty. So, which is reducing actually that dollar ask, um, that you could have, could, could have done. The general supplemental levy is a, um, does not have a max, you can be as high or low as you need it to be, I guess.
Right.
Um, and then the three dollars and ninety-five cents is what goes to the townships, the rural services, that is at a max level again. Um, there was some, uh, valuation growth there as well. Most of that, um, is for the secondary road transfers. Is that?
Yep, perfect. This is the public hearing portion, so are there any questions from the public? Emily, anything on mine? Hearing none, seeing none? Very good. With that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make motion to close the public hearing. McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Item number twelve is resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty-nine, which is FY twenty-three, maximum property tax dollars.
Right, so, um, again, this is a resolu- resolution form actually taking action that you will not exceed the amount of property tax dollars asked for from, um, the Marion County taxpayers, uh, that was just represented in that public hearing. Um, and again, um, final budget will be in March, uh, the final approval on those types of things, and at this point, uh, the portion of general county services, that top line, will be reduced by that twenty cent, um, amount, reflective through, reflective through, which is approximately three hundred thousand dollars.
Right, that's correct. Board, any questions on this?
No.
Alright, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty-nine?
I move we approve resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty-nine.
I'll second. Remy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Item thirteen is a discussion, a continued discussion on the Marion County FY twenty-three budget.
This was just gonna be the final, if you guys have anything?
Right. Yeah, I think, I mean, the last, the last major items, that was one. Um, healthcare, which we've talked about, which is the next item on the list. Um, and then, uh, general salary discussion. Um, we did comp board, which impacts electeds, deputies, and some other individuals. Um, Jake, I don't know if you have, do you have that chart that Danny put together?
Uh, I'm not the one that, do you?
The one that I asked, the one that I asked her to put together?
I do not have access to that here.
Okay. Well, just, yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll just verbally do it, and, and, uh, I can probably dig it out here.
She is on, if you wanna ask her if she could find that and share it.
Danny, are you on? Danny?
It, it's probably been on, I don't know.
Well, if not, so, we, we have been having discussion on the overall salary impacts of the proposed budgets. Um, so what I had Danny do was pull out the electeds and the deputy salaries. So, anything that would be impacted by that comp board resolution, to get an idea of what the aggregate increase across the entire budget was, for all employees, uh, not directly impacted by the comp board. Well, it turns out that that overall increase is about five percent, when you look at it across all departments. Some are more, some are less, but that's gonna be dependent on the size of the department, and obviously Tyler's department is bigger, Ed's is smaller, so you're gonna have some differences by department. But the overall increase is roughly five percent, is where we're at right now, on an aggregate basis. And that's not individually by department, that's just total. Um, which fits in line with where I was thinking, that we would fall anyway. So, I, I like the, the management that's been done from the, the managers on their budgets. Um, so, we could, boy, if she was on, I could pull that chart.
Mark, I am on.
Oh, that's great. Hey, Danny?
Hey, I just emailed, uh.
That woke me up.
I just emailed Renee and Emily.
So, do you, do you have that?
Yep.
That you can pull up for everybody? Thank you, Danny.
Was that, was I loud?
Yeah.
No, 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 you're fine.
It's the room.
You're fine.
It's just the room, yeah.
Renee, if you can open the PDF? Think is what he probably wants to see.
It's Emily, ever, I, I don't know.
Oh, sorry, I can't see who's over there.
Yeah, good.
Okay, can, can you make that bigger, for those of us who? That's a little better. So, so anyway, Danny, did I remember, did I remember my, uh, and Jake, you were there too, so did I remember my, uh, analysis correctly, that we were pulling out the comp board folks and deputies, uh, anybody impacted by the comp board, and what was the, uh, proposed or the projected FY twenty-three salary for the remainder of the staff, on a percentage basis? Is that?
So, the assumptions are on the bottom there, you're right.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, and again, this is based off the bu- the budgeted dollars and the percentage increases.
And we've always come in under the budgeted dollars, generally.
Yes, departments are not supposed to go over their budget.
Right. So, that gives you an idea of at least from a budget, this again, that's good, that's a good, I, uh, clarification, Jake, the budgeted dollars, okay? Not the actual dollars we've spent, because those tend to come in under, they can't exceed these numbers. So, anyway, if you take it all across the board, we're at five percent right now, on an aggregate basis.
And I, and I guess, I don't mean to interrupt, Mark.
No, go ahead.
This was done prior to, uh, any adjustments you guys had made on the last discussion. So, like, from, um, Kim's public health, environmental health, anything with the sheriff that's not reflective, this was prior to that.
Right.
Okay.
And the sheriff wouldn't have the union negotiation or any of that?
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Right. So, just understand that from.
Tyler's got a question.
Well, hold on. So, so if Kim went up to, what, we talked about the last meeting, it was five or six, or whatever, what did you end up going to, Kim, I don't know?
I put in six.
Okay. So, then we would look at that number, but still, it's going to go up to, uh, on a percentage basis, Jake?
It's the, it would be, like, if you just take the gross amounts, that's where it comes down to. Kim's, and Kim's bottom line, I entered her, I haven't entered her, the number she submitted la- in the last week, but bottom line didn't change, it was just moving, moving around within the, within the budget.
Because remember, Kim is targeting grant money for salaries, this year. So, um, so keep that in mind. So, anyway, I thought that it, it, it's helpful to give you a sense of where we're at from a budgeted standpoint. We all try to do our simple averages and those types of things, but it needs to be a weighted average, which this sort of takes into account. So, anyway.
It's not, and it's not reflective of fund?
No. It's just aggregate, aggregate dollars.
Sorry, I was looking at that, well, and you and Jake were having a discussion about the, but not going over the budgeted wage amount.
Right.
Can, can you repeat what you guys were saying there? Sorry, I missed that.
Go ahead, Jake.
I think he just asked if, generally, um, departments don't go over their budgeted amount.
Or wages specifically?
Um.
Or is that what we're?
Yes.
I mean, we do, we have had that. You know, I budget a set amount of overtime, you know, when we cap out on comp time, there are winters when we do incur, and I will occasionally go over, you know, the overtime budgeted is a budget number, based on averages.
So, what I'm thinking about is raw salary, Tyler.
Gotcha.
I'm not, 'cause if we, if we try to factor in overtime, that's a variable cost, we don't know what that number's gonna be.
Okay, I, I just missed.
And he still doesn't, yeah, yeah. And he still doesn't go over the departmental bottom line.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
At least he's not supposed to.
So, that's fair, that's fair clarification, but I didn't, I did not, I did not try to contemplate overtime. So, we've got this, we've got any other items you wanna talk about relative to the budget, and then we've got, uh, healthcare, which we need to square away, which I really appreciate what Sarah did today, uh, for her presentation. So, where would you like to begin?
Well, we wanna begin with that, uh, line where it's at now.
You're talking about that, uh?
Yeah, from changing the, the hundred thousand, the two hundred thousand on the cleanup.
Yeah.
Line, 'cause Bridget had expressed some concerns, uh, that that problem.
Yeah, Department ninety-nine.
Yep. So, we had talked about taking that two hundred thousand, we had allotted Department ninety-nine for cleanup, down to a hundred.
That's what the current budget.
That's what the current budget is, but before that.
You spent two hundred.
Two hundred to one hundred, do we wanna go back to two hundred? And I think Bridget, uh, Missy, Ed, and I have talked about cleanup and about having the dollars available to do some of those actions and to be more proactive, without getting into the whole technicality of what do we do, the ordinance project, or whatever we do. If we continue to be complaint-driven, which Ed, we are currently complaint-driven, the costs of those things, we are ve- so variable, we need to have the ability to manage those costs, depending on the project. Is that, is that fair, a fair assessment, Ed?
Yes, I mean, we had a meeting last week concerning this issue and, and some of the direction of how aggressive does this board want Missy, uh, and Bridget to be moving forward, and to what extent do we believe that it's an investment in future economic growth to clean up these properties? Uh, and it was my understanding that in early March, uh, when Missy comes back for vacation, Bridget's back, we're gonna sit down and kinda identify the top five properties that we wanna clean up, uh, that have been given more than enough time to come into compliance voluntarily, and for one reason or another has not. And some of these properties go back decades. Uh, so, if, if the direction of the board is to wish for them to be more aggressive in cleanup, then we have to have the resources allocated to do that. And it seems to me that the best use of, of my office's time and their time is to work on an aggressive approach to cleanup, rather than our rewrite of our ordinances in this fiscal year.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Steve, any, any thoughts on that?
No, I'm, I'm willing to change that, that line to two hundred thousand.
As in mine, yeah. So, Jake, what do you need to, what do you need to put that back in, or just?
You guys, it's, again, it's a budget, it's a line item that gets used or doesn't get used. Um, if you, if you increase that particular line item, uh, that when you, it, basically, what hap- when you cycle through to your ending cash flow for your general fund, that just decreases that ending cash balance by, by that equivalent amount.
Why don't you go ahead and put that back at two hundred, but?
Yep, that's not a problem, it's an easy budget.
Very good, thank you. Any other items?
I will say, uh, Jason and I met, and, uh, we were, um, we agreed upon, uh, an amount for, um, reduction in his budget and regarding, uh, the compensation for salaries, so. I think, uh, Jason, I think Jason could attest that it was, it went very well.
Yeah, can you guys see me?
Yep.
Yeah, I was very appreciative of Keisha's time, uh, uh, I think she was very fair in the reduction amounts on it, and, um, we had a really good discussion, so I'm appreciative of that.
So, you're gonna make that change?
So, what are, what are those, Jason? Jake's looking at, Jake's looking at me like, what's, what's that number?
I would rather discuss when we, uh, we have our, um, meeting here at noon on that, and so, you, I mean, I can tell you the dollar amounts and everything, it doesn't affect the deputies, or my employees, or anything along those lines, I'm gonna cut that in other areas, but I don't have it right here in front of me. Um, I can bring that to our, our meeting that we're having to discuss, um, unless, Keisha, you wanna just throw out the dollar amount or something on it, but?
Yeah, so, overall, I, I can give him just a dollar amount. It's my understanding you were gonna go through on your budget, because like you said, that you wanted to be able to take it out of a couple different areas. So, the total, um, reducing his budget is sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Didn't we round that, Jason, 'cause it was two sixty-four, fifty-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever you had on that, I was fair with that, and I'll, uh, like I said, I don't want to impact my employees along those lines, but I'll, I will make that adjustment in other areas.
Okay, yep, and we went over how that was, um, determined, so.
Yep.
And Jason, can you, Chad, send me new worksheets, please?
Yep, I sure will, we're waiting to, for our meeting today.
That's fine.
Um, in regards to the union side of it, but we will get you the brand-new sheets, getting, showing them.
Then we'll make adjustments and, and we'll go to the newspaper.
Alright, thank you.
Got it. Thank you very much. Alright. Very good. Any, any other items? On the, on the general part, we'll talk health insurance here on the next one, but?
Well, I'm, it's, it's surprising you come up with that number, that's where I was at, Mark, was five percent. Uh, that's, that's where I'm at, and I, I believe that the, you know, especially where I've been talking about beginning of the meeting, you know, what, I don't know what next year's gonna bring. Uh, we'll have to wait and see. I'm of the opinion that, that, uh, in, any employee not governed by statute or by contract, uh, receive up to a maximum of five percent. Which I believe that will give the discretionary latitude to the department heads, based on performance reviews, they can go anywhere from one to five, like, you know? That's where I'm at, that's where I'm at in my head on, on, on pay increases, the wages.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in a little bit of a different position, where I'm just willing to accept the budgets as submitted, knowing that there are different rates within those non-impacted employees, the ones that we called out of there. So, I'm, I'm gonna look at the macro number, not the specifics.
And I did do a little bit of research from our last meeting, I did call around to other counties and see how, you know, things were done, because, as we know, this is a position that's, um, not easy. It's one that's difficult, because, um, you know, we're in open meeting laws. So, I did call, you know, others, fellow board supervisors in adjacent counties, and, um, a lot of them, that's how it's done, is just, uh, percentage, um, the, those that are not under statute, or as, however Steve said it, contract, um, and so, yeah. I mean, you guys kind of all know where I've been. I mean, we've talked about this before, and I was at the five percent too, so.
So, so, I wanna make sure we clarify this. You folks wanna tell every department to be between one to five percent on raises?
Five percent max.
Yeah, that's, that's what that means.
That's, that's my, that's my take on it.
Okay, so, somebody make that motion, so I can oppose it.
Okay, I make a motion that all employees not governed by statute or contract receive up to a maximum five percent wage increase.
Got motion supported.
Headed discussion.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I made my position clear, it, we're at five percent in the, in the gross budget, so I'm not gonna micromanage each department.
Are we ready for a vote?
What's that?
Are we ready for a vote?
Yeah, we're ready.
John?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy? So.
What else do we need to clear up on this?
I would need file numbers for, well, whatever the adjustment Jason's gonna give. Kim submitted hers from your, from last week that I'll enter, and then make that other change. I guess, from administration standpoint of budget process, budget is just a budget. We need, it's been long enough now, we need to get to, we need to get to publication deadline. So is the expectation with that motion that all departments have to go back and resubmit entries? Or is it just, the budget is what it is, because it's just a budget, and then the July one pay raises changes come in?
Well, if they made a motion and supported it to make sure that raises fit in that range, they've got to redo all those.
So then I, then I would need all departments to do that.
Because some of the, because the budget would be changed, that five percent's gonna be less than that.
So just point of clarification, the board of supervisors is now directing elected officials to set range of rates of raises, not exceed five percent. That's what just occurred.
That's what just occurred. All, all department heads, not just electeds.
Right.
All department heads. That means you're gonna be redoing all those forms.
Not the total budget amount, specifically directing line items for wages.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. What, what else, Jake?
Your levies were set, which is the key. That's what flows through. I, I didn't need any, I don't need anything else.
Okay, so we can close discussion on that item, because they're gonna have to, they're gonna, you have to come back with amendments.
But...
And then we'll have to accept the budget.
Well, I think we're to a point where the amendments are gonna have to come back in, and we have to go to paper.
Yeah.
So then that will be the final budget amount.
Agreed.
Yep. Right?
I agree.
So I, I would not anticipate until the public hearing and that type of thing that that part would come back.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And then there's always the, the next round of, the new, start of the new fiscal year as well.
Right. Very good. Thank you. Item, new item, fourteen, healthcare. So where are we at with that?
I took the liberty of creating a new Resolution twenty-two-two-two-seven based on the numbers that I heard you say for the dental plan. So I have the new resolution, if you want to look at that.
Oh, is that, that's this though, right?
Nope, that one's not good anymore. So if you look at this one, it doesn't have your name.
That's what the change is, she...
Yeah, yep. So I, I had, I had a little bit of time. I could change that.
Thank you, Lisa.
The one that, that one, that would be the one I believe. I believe that's where you were going with what I heard.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't have any issues with that.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-two-two-seven.
I'll second it. Jake?
McCombs?
Hi.
Rayne?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Very good. Last item, updates.
I don't, I don't have any.
Steve?
Uh, no, I'm good, I guess.
Very good. We've got Board of Health today. And, yeah. Later on today. Meeting's after.
Hi.
Well, good. Yeah, thanks. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion, may adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Rayne?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Go back and get your sheets done. Steve, you want to chat for a second about juvenile court?
Can we get it off? It won't go here, I'll do it.
It's off?
No. I pushed every button.